Start this.
I'm going by the sun, I don't know the light.
Dear Lord, we thank you for another good weekend and a successful corn fest and thank you for everybody's safety and all the work that was done for that. Just help us get through this meeting and make the best decisions for the city and moving forward and ask all these things in your name, amen.
My pleasure to see you like. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're already pressed to wait through the agenda. Okay, so everybody got a chance to look at the meeting minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
My second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody's in favor. Okay, monthly bills. Is there a motion to pay bills?
I make the motion when we pay the monthly bills.
Okay, Dot? Bonnie? Any discussion? All in favor? Alright. Don't have any citizens in the gallery? Okay, Ms. Peggy?
Have a few catch-up budget amendments that need to maybe be made, they're all small, in total they're less than ten thousand dollars. They're just, prices have gone up on things and I think that's what most of it is. I'll send those down so you can see them in case you have any questions.
Can I get one?
Yeah.
It's coming. I was gonna make Dot stretch rather than make it easy for Bonnie.
So we're looking to amend the difference?
Correct.
And then the general fund for this amount?
Yes.
We can do these all in one motion?
All in one motion.
If I just mention them all or somebody mentions them all?
Just mention all the budget amendments as recommended by the state treasurer.
Okay, I make that motion that we approve the
We amend the amendments.
The budget amendments as recommended by our treasurer.
I'll second.
Dot and Rick, all in favor? Done, okay unless you have any other questions?
Thank you Peggy.
Are you gonna stick around for the last one?
I'm going to stay, yes.
Alright. Roger?
I'm gonna let Mike go before me.
Okay.
I just have a couple of things.
I don't see Mike on here.
Quite the morrow though.
In the twenty twenty-five budget, we budgeted for a spare wastewater pump for the lift station at the school and farm and home. We have taken possession of that new pump and it is now in service because we had a pump in the school lift station go down. I've got a repair list here, the total comes out to like ninety-eight hundred dollars, ninety-six twenty fifty-four to repair the pump. New one, if we wanted to order a new one next year's budget's gonna be like thirty-two. So I, I think the repair, we're gonna move this pump that's being repaired into our spare slot, so we'll have it. It's just an investment in case we've got one of these other pumps that does have a problem or something, we can put it in that spot while it's getting worked on or something like that. I talked with Peggy, she said that it looked, probably looked okay. There's some, there's a fund through the USDA that we're putting money into that we might be able to pull some of that out of to check into, so.
How many more pumps we got to replace, they're not?
Um, the one, there's one more pump in the school lift station that's fairly old. The ones in the farm and home lift station are probably only like ten years old, when we did the sewer project, we replaced those two. The ones at the school lift station are the oldest ones. And it's got a brand-new one in it now. And we've got it set to where it, the brand, the new one runs most of the load and the old one just kinda picks up the slack if we have some heavy flow. That pump has got an automatic reverser and a automatic slow start-up and slow, slow, you know, I mean it automatically does all of that internally. That's kinda why they're getting so expensive is they're putting all of that in internally instead of having to change the control panel because you could have to do twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth of control change to be able to do that to the pumps. Well, they're adding that, that kinda technology into the pump itself, so it's got a slow start and a slow stop at the same time. So anti-clog, it'll run backwards about seven revolutions and then kick back the other way, so. Yeah, so they are, they are a lot better than what we're working with, but they're really expensive. And then the only other approval, while we were doing the pump work, I had him send me a quote for our maintenance when they come and take the pumps apart, kinda oil them and just give us a rundown of what the measurements are, what the wear rings and things like that. It's, it's still about the same, about seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-three eighty I think is the exact number. That's just something we're gonna put in the budget for next year of that amount. But if we sign the agreement now, it's locked in on price, it won't go up to ten or fifteen percent after January one. We don't have to do it till March if we don't want to, we'll schedule, I'll schedule that with Vander Venter, but that's just something that needs approval too. And then the mayor can sign both of these agreements for the repair and the maintenance agreement if you guys approve it.
What was the maintenance agreement again?
Uh, I think it's seventy-three eighty Peggy.
So we just sign the agreement and then the price won't go up?
Basically, yes, yes, that, and we'll do that, we won't do that, and it'll be in next year's budget, we're not gonna have to do any amendment or anything. Yeah, seventy-three eighty for the twenty twenty-six inspection.
How often do they inspect them?
Every, we do it every other year. Yeah, that's kinda what they recommend, they really want you to do it every year, but I think it's a little redundant to do it every year. Every other year gives our pocketbook a year off, plus we still kinda can get a trend of how they're running every other year.
Is there a motion to approve? Like recommendations to repair?
Yes.
The one pump for ninety-six twenty and
And request the funds from USDA.
Requested from USDA. And to sign the maintenance quote, which is for year twenty-six.
Yes.
Rick and David, all in favor? Alright.
Thank you very much.
I can sign those?
Yeah, Marcus, Marcus got those in the city's email, the one, I printed these off, I don't know if you scanned them in to her, to send them back or?
I've checked either.
But I'll put them on your desk.
Yeah, right, yeah, I can, yeah.
I have a good bunch of guys working for you, we're doing some business.
Are you keeping streets about that or?
Getting close? Yeah, very, start laying just a little bit more, I think I got about twelve more blocks on my way over there.
You're gonna start sealing them?
How many? Twelve.
Any plans on East North Street and several people complaining about?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to patch some of that before we go anywhere. We bottled a couple in the other day, but that road is bad. That, this is like this street over here, full blown, that, that would be poor.
It's pretty nice now.
Yeah, we're gonna try to patch the lawnmower from the county barn, dig with us and put seals on it, north, we're gonna try to just patch the leaves and smooth it up a little bit. We're gonna try, I can tell you that. Don't care how much I got in the budget, what we're gonna do.
What we're gonna do, the city police truck, anybody got any idea what?
The old one that's got the bottom running boards on it?
Yeah.
My opinion is if they could use it, take the stickers off and let the city use it. Beats taking more money out of blocking the barn some.
Is that something we can do or do we need?
We tax the public equipment out?
Yeah. But I mean as far as moving it from one department to another, is there any bookkeeping things we have to do?
Don't book it, why, maybe what you think.
I'm sorry?
If they were to decommission the second police truck?
Yeah, they do. They just definitely.
Have all the equipment taken out?
They will take everything out.
I told you for that.
Nah.
Not he's gonna be using it.
They can use it for a cloud truck.
Move to the
He said it would make a good cloud truck.
Cloud truck, yeah.
Well, the cops will be using it.
That's right, so I was thinking this is gonna rest away.
Just put the insurance from
A lot, I mean it's not bad.
Yeah, it's sixty thousand.
Does that probably go down?
The sold even that would be.
Well, it would because of the use.
It would, yeah.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to allow the street department to take possession of the second city police truck and remove all the equipment out of it and use it for a car?
I make the motion?
One second. Stacy, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so far you've got a thousand, let's keep going.
Thank you.
Snowplow on now.
We're definitely, we're good.
Oh, good.
Hopefully we won't need it, hopefully there won't be a lot of snow is what I'm saying. I'm looking forward to it, not at all.
Okay, anything else from Roger? Yeah, we gotta talk about the baler, we can't do a three-phase converter, it'll void the warranty, so we gotta back up and punch that.
The repair you need.
But I think we got someone.
Welds pieces on, that's all it is, good to go.
Roger, do you wanna explain that last thing for Peggy about?
Riding trash truck?
The two boys that told me.
We have two boys riding trash truck now and, you know, we talked about letting one go or two go, however long it goes. But if they both go, one of us four that's there left over right now, somebody might have to ride the trash truck. If there's a boy there that would do it now, if he could get three days a week, eight hours a day, for twenty dollars an hour, no benefits, he would like to do it all year long.
Is that part-timer?
Yes.
I wasn't paying attention a minute ago, I was seeing that, I was kinda calculating. And it looks like that would be sanitation.
Yes.
So it looks like at this point the budget will allow that.
That'd be one, that'd be really not nice, that'd really help a lot. And he, and he, and he, he said he would do it for that, so.
So he wants twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
We talked about one person.
One person.
Be part-time, trash only, to be the driver.
Yes, be with him.
Lawnmower's about done anyway?
Yeah.
He does have a CDL, right?
Huh?
He does have a CDL, right?
Oh, yes.
No, he's, uh, Mac.
Oh, he's riding.
Yeah, he's a rider.
He's talking about the rider in the back. Okay, I thought you were talking about the driver.
No ma'am, he's a rider.
We can't keep anybody on a trash truck on the line.
Yeah.
So I think we have somebody that said, yes, I'll do it, I'm saying yeah.
Yeah, he'll say, yes, he'll do it.
So which one are we talking about now?
Don't.
The Okay, but are we keeping a part-time driver?
Well, that's Mac and that's what, that's something I've talked about, you want him in part-time, you want him full-time, that's something I've talked about.
Mac gets work done.
Mac's hard, Mac, Mac doesn't rest, Mac does work.
Would he work full-time? Cause he told me he didn't work full-time.
I think he would for a while, I don't know how long, it's hard to get something, it's hard. But I, I think he'd stay for a year or two. And he's, and he's good on the truck, I mean.
That wouldn't all come out of the trash department because they don't work forty hours in the trash, it's something with the, uh, street water, sewer, something else.
With three days he's on trash trucking.
Three days he's on trucking.
Yeah.
And he runs the trash truck by himself on the old dumpers. He would work harder, he would work real hard.
Maybe they do not have anybody on that trash truck by themselves.
Nah, that's not, that's why I wanna hire them to keep it moving, that's not good to have.
Yes, that's a lot of weight there, danger serious there.
Especially with the winter camps, they could slip and fall and nobody would know.
Is that? So I'm not sure what the question is.
That's what I, I don't understand.
Is there money in the budget to hire Mr. Early?
Full time?
Full time.
Is that something he wants?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
At this point in time, yes.
Okay, so well, kinda have to evaluate that because then that's gonna mean health insurance and the whole bit.
And it'll make the deal of having these other part-time people, I mean it affects everything.
Right.
Yes.
Can we take a little time on this decision?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And then make it next meeting?
Yes.
Sure.
He's good with that too, so I, and yeah, that's, that's fine.
So we're keeping him on part-time at this point?
Yes ma'am.
And then we'll reevaluate next time?
Yes, I think, yes, that's, that's, it's all good.
Same with these other part-time, we're just
Yes.
Keeping everything the same until, okay.
That works for me.
Okay.
And that works for them, they're all good with that, so, cause I told them that.
So we're okay to hire the one, twenty dollars an hour part-time?
For sanitation only?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty-four hours a week, what do you want?
We need a motion for that?
Is this a new person?
No, don't, no.
Okay, if it's not somebody new, then we don't need anything, we're just continuing the way we are.
Okay.
He's just, he's working twenty-four hours, that's all he wants to work and.
Is that what he's being paid now or is that what you're asking?
No, he's paying seventeen now and he want, he would like to have twenty if he wanted to be full-time and it went all the
So that's the decision.
That's the decision I made.
That's the decision they need to make.
He wants twenty bucks an hour to stay part-time.
All year long?
All year round, no benefits.
And you're talking about this one particular person?
Yes ma'am.
So that's the decision that needs to be made.
But it, the money's in the sanitation fund that would allow that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to pay this individual?
Well, how am I gonna make it even to everybody else?
Who would he ask, Josh?
Yes.
Not on Friday when he was in here.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
He reeked. I can smell him, but he was off Friday, right?
This is gonna be on the internet.
Well, it's great.
Or even, you know, somebody else may want it.
Okay, so who made the motion?
We haven't yet, we're still doing
Cause you do one, you gotta do the other.
Yeah.
Let's just.
Table it to
Table it for right now, sounds good.
Okay.
Be best.
Alright.
Yeah. Let's just do that, actually be best.
Okay. You got anything else, Roger?
No, other than that, uh, baler thing, uh, they said that avoid the warranty?
If we use a converter, um, there, I called the baler company, they do have a single-phase one.
Yes.
Um, it'll be about nine hundred dollars more than the three-phase, but we don't have to deal with a three-phase.
Converter, and a converter will be fifteen hundred dollars or so.
Well, um, we had one bid that to do the converter and hook just the converter up is almost four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's one thing.
So, yeah, I said, well, I know it's late in the game, but what would that bid be to just hook it straight? And he said, nah, take that converter off and be in the ballpark real, real close.
Yes.
So, yeah. So that's, I think that's what we're, they haven't got me the, the bid yet, I just called them today. But the girl I talked to, she'll get it to me tomorrow. This doesn't, the grant doesn't have to be in until the fifteenth, but it will not be awarded or decided on until after January first. So, we're not gonna get it this year.
Well, that's fine, you're playing the door, that's all.
It is a seventy-five twenty-five grand percent, so I figured our part will be between around seven thousand, but it won't be till next year, so it'd be something we could maybe budget and move around a little easier than this year. Um, but Chris Feeny did say this was what the solid waste grants were initially intended for, was not the nice recycled picnic tables, but it was to keep stuff out of the landfill.
Well, it cost us, I mean, a landfill.
Yeah.
If we can, I mean, in a year's time, you say seven thousand dollars, that's, that'd be well worth it.
So would you say, I know our trips to the landfill have went up since we lost that, but we've also started doing dumpsters. So would you say pulling the cardboard out of the garbage would give us at least one load less a month?
Probably.
We'd probably be able to get two bales?
I think we can make it where they can, we can keep the door open where they can back in there and unload it, we're inside, that way it won't get wet or nothing ever.
Would you think a safe estimate would be we could make two bales a month, or eleven-hundred-pound bales?
Yeah.
Cause I have to put in there how many, how much tonnage are we gonna keep out of them? But it's just
Two days, that thing's full.
Yeah, and, and
And the more the word gets around, it'll
Yeah, once you get everybody know and everyone, I'll start
It's worth the try, I'll tell you that, it's worth the try.
And Memphis is looking at, they had a meeting, they were, cause we have to prove what are we gonna do with these once we get a baled. So Memphis, um, Chris Feeny suggested getting with Memphis because they do their own and adding it to their, their load, because if you get a semi-load, it's a much better price. She didn't think that would be a problem, but she hasn't sent me the letter yet that says we can do that. So that's my project tomorrow, she didn't call me back today, so. But yeah, I thought I had it all ready to
Signed it off.
And I was like, well, no, we're not gonna do that, but it doesn't have to be until next, but I have some of it already. And grant applications are not fun. You think you got it figured out.
And there's something else.
But yeah.
Select a demolition deal.
So they need to make a decision tonight, but that's the direction?
Go ahead and do it, motion it.
To go with the single-phase and
Yes.
Um, when we get, yeah. Yeah, well, so if we do the single phases, is that the way you want to go?
That's what I would do for the cost of.
Okay.
Lot less hassle.
Lots.
Yeah, especially if you're gonna void the warranty on it. That's not worth it to void something out like that.
And you mean like you run it every day?
That's right.
No.
That'd be the only benefit you did if you did, if you ran it every day, you'd have electric.
And one of those days for the boy, that's what I was gonna have him do.
Yeah, one day a week, just go bail.
Yep. It would create, but we'll have to talk about this.
The, the first bid they gave me, of course, was for the three-phase, so this is gonna be about a thousand dollars higher. Wait, is this thing, no, this is for the single-phase, she must have sent it to you?
She left today.
Okay.
Yes.
Nineteen hundred dollars, the other one was eighteen something. Oh, I'm sorry, not nineteen hundred, eighteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand, yeah. For the, for the baler?
Yeah.
That uses the single-phase.
We had two quotes to hook it up, one
So it's about the same price then?
They're pretty much the same price. But yeah. So, is there a motion to proceed with a single-phase cardboard baler and submit the grant?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Deal.
We'll see how that goes.
I, uh, September twenty-second, I had two screws breaking in the back, so I gotta go get them fixed.
One day?
September twenty-second.
It's coming right up.
I'll have the rose laid that I'm gonna lay by then. It'd be caught up.
We're having snow, we're alright.
I don't want no snow yet.
No, stone.
But he said it's not such a big surgery as the first time, he said it's ten times easier.
Yeah.
He said you just take the broken ones out and you'll put a lot bigger one in, he said, the next morning you'll, you'll feel a difference. Cause when I lay in bed, I lay off my side and I turn over, about a half second later, there's something hit coming with me, so, takes a little while to catch up.
How's the new mower?
Uh, I'll tell you at the end of the week.
Okay.
Cause we're, it gets hooked on tomorrow and it's a little work.
At, uh, the east end of East North Street?
That's where we're headed, that's where we're headed, right there. Yeah, that's all the, there's no dump or nothing in there, we cut it out, but, so we can take her down to nothing there, so that's where we're headed.
Okay.
That means it bad. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Roger.
Welcome.
Had lots and lots of compliments on, from people this weekend.
Good. Uh, hey, we got our, they, they, we've been at our
Money can't fix, right?
That's right.
Ain't nothing money can't fix, it just takes money.
It does take a lot of that.
Yes, it does.
How's our grant going on our buildings, have you heard?
We are having a kickoff and whatever, I, we've talked about, it's, I think it sounds a lot more glorious than it really is.
Yeah, kickoff sounds like
Next Monday at nine o'clock at the community center.
At the community center?
I thought that's what it said.
Oh, well, he probably did, I just know that he's, uh, Chris said he would be here.
We need to go to this deal, let's
And he wants you to be there. I wanna go.
Yes.
Of course, he said he was coming to Memphis and I said, you mean Edina? And then he's like, oh yeah, Edina.
Still up in Memphis.
Yeah.
They'll get the grant, they won't, right?
Let's see, that's all the meetings. I've got too many meetings in here. Oh, there it is. CBDG has scheduled the initial kickoff meeting for the demolition grant, nine AM on Monday, September fifteenth. Will be similar to the meeting they had regarding the emergency grant, which I have no idea what that was. And I do not know if they will do the risk assessment at this meeting, but if Peggy would be available, attend, that might help if they do that portion of the process. She does need to be there, but some of the questions relate to your bookkeeping processes. You will come over and I believe the CBDG compliance officer, Ryan Griffin, will be attending in person. Please let me know if this date won't work.
So it's just here then?
Well
Because I, I just took it
He came here before.
He came here before and I didn't
Why did I think it was at the community?
Maybe you ask him or something, cause I thought, is that the community center? That sounds like a big deal. And that doesn't sound like
Yeah.
He, that doesn't sound like somebody would be asking financial questions.
But anyway, I, I will see him on Wednesday, I'll ask him for sure where it's at and let you know, but, yeah. It will be either here or there. So that's, it's moving, and then I think after this is when they'll put it up for the environmental assessments, so they can get the bid specs. So we're getting closer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was talking to a guy today that was on the Kirksville City Council, I said the dumbest thing you'll ever do in your life is put something on a historical district. Don't ever do that. Yeah. That's because you can't do anything with it. So, so that's going well, um, just trying to do some math here, math is not much. I didn't get a chance for one of these guys to redo his bid for hooking up the baler, since we're going to single-phase, so he told me what to take off, so. I'll let you guys look at those.
Does he got a lot of Christie in it, the building?
It's got a little bit.
We don't
I'd say it's real old and he's
It needs to be replaced.
Is it over, is it overhead or underground?
It's gotta be underground, cause I, is, is it underground, Mike?
No, there's a, there's a weatherhead on the east side of the building.
Where's it go to?
Comes right down in that little office, you're talking about the lower shed at the city barn?
Yes.
Yeah, it's overhead, it comes right there, there's, I was gonna tell you, there's three-phase at
Right, right by there.
Yeah, I mean, if there's even three-phase on us, we've got it
Yeah.
Hooked up for the lift station.
But you get it to that building?
To get it to that building, no.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Twenty-eight thousand, to get it to there.
So the Kirk engineer was the one that suggested converter.
Yeah, you have to save a lot on your electric bill.
Yeah, that's right, if we're using it every day, it'd be a big story.
He said if I'm not using it very much is why it's gonna be so expensive, that's why. He said, if I'm not using it very much, it's why it's gonna be so expensive, that's why.
Yeah. Um, I did send out, I handed out three quotes to hook up the electrical for that.
But later on, she contacted me and said she would.
This one, just be there, you guys can look at it and see which one you wanna go with, one is kinda general, one is more itemized, so.
Can you guys say them out loud?
Pardon?
Can you say them out loud?
Oh, read them out loud.
We have a bid from A to Z Restoration for forty-eight hundred dollars, and we have one from Za Ringer's for basically fifty-five hundred dollars. So it's.
And are those for the, oh, for the Baylor?
Hooking up the bail.
That's just hooking it up.
Yeah, that's just to hook up the electrical on the Baylor, so. If you guys wanna look at them, see which one you, Tony, I need to go with. We had to submit three bids, they did not have to be advertised bids, so I submitted them to our three electrical contractor in town.
So on what we was talking about earlier, it's three?
What they're thinking about, are they putting new line in, or the other, or just?
Um, everyone said they would run us a little electric, two there, we gotta put breaker panels.
Yeah.
New weatherhead, breaker box, uh, dedicated circuit.
Yeah, it'd be the best.
We gotta put a meter in.
Yeah, that's gonna cost us a monthly bill.
Yeah, so, um. One is kinda general, one is more itemized, I mean, he's got three pages there of stuff that they wanna do. It's another one of those, I thought it was gonna be easy, but not so.
Yeah, I'm gonna retire and everything, I had another meter from up there that you can run over to there.
That'd be nice, wouldn't it?
So it's a difference of six hundred dollars in the bids.
Meeting another meter, be able to pay another thirty, forty dollars a month, that's about it.
Get the job, it's just that you need the figures to be able to submit.
Yes, yes, I had to, I had to send out bids to submit a estimated dollar amount of what they. But those are the two that showed interest in doing the Baylor.
So are we required to have a third one?
No, cause I called and asked Marla, cause they were, we got one right away, and the other one came today. So she said, no, you just have to note, they, you had to submit them, or you can just note, only had one come back. So you, you just had to submit them to three. So, yeah.
Yeah, cause if we actually get the grant, but then we'd be advertising for people to do the work.
You said this one happened until January?
The grant won't be fine, it won't be awarded until after January first.
So we don't have to make a decision on this?
No. Yeah, I just wanted you guys to see what they, what we're looking at.
Alright.
And I would probably, for dollar estimate in the grant, go with the higher bid, just so.
When you know the estimate, it will, it can change it.
Oh, I know, I know. Especially waiting four months. They could double, you never know.
This oughta change though, is that, take the three-phase off.
I that's, was that like a thirty-seven?
Three-phase converter and everything, it's.
Okay, that's on the first page, that figure, that circle was, I took off the three-phase.
Oh.
And we were looking at the, the old city barn, there was a section off to the east side of it that used to be the office, it does have a cement floor. That's where they were gonna put it, so we could have a door on it and be. So I will include those with this. And then reading it more, when we submit it, we have to submit it with twelve copies.
Oh, yeah.
Because you gotta give it to one, to everybody on the solid waste committee. So you have to supply your own copies.
Yeah.
And it's thick. I'll take a ring of paper.
Yes, definitely.
Wonder if we could add that in? Okay. Alright, so I will, is Delmer sick?
Uh, no, he just was gonna be out of town.
Okay.
This evening, yeah, he told me that fall back, so that I know it's gonna be a short one.
Alright, so I will continue on with that, and I also got two bids to fix the, um, police garage. And there's quite a difference in them, but again, quite a difference in bid process. We have one for two thousand and one for nine hundred and fifty. That's two, they would put a, this first one, they quoted a bright, a high-bright dusk dawn light and inside light, redo all the electrical. Put the plugins where they need to go. I think he, this is down to PVC straps, how many structure we need to hold up the conduit and. Can we get one?
Putting those out here, it ain't high enough to put a high bay light out there.
On the outside, or in here?
That's put on roof. That's put on roof.
What kind of, what, I didn't understand what kind of light that was.
Well, they're high bay, I mean, for a tall bay.
Okay.
I don't think we're very tall.
Wouldn't be good and bright then.
Yeah.
Be like a laser light.
Sunburn out there, you walk under it, then. So we're talking about doing cleanup in here sometime?
Do you try and give me a favor? Why do we have to go through?
Track, track up there, just toss it all in? Dumpster?
Naomi said she need to get permission from the court or whatever, if anything, but it's, it's not any good, I mean, the evidence, but she needs to get.
Needs to get written permission to.
Get permission.
Yeah.
But the evidence has been exposed to everybody.
I would say as soon as she can get that, we need to get that permission, so we can clean it out.
Yeah, so is that a consensus that we wanted to do that, or?
I think it would be nice.
Well, especially if they're going to fix the electric back here, then they'll need to be able to get two things to do it.
We don't need it in there, I mean, fire hazard.
Well, yeah, it, and if they, they rule it can no longer be used as evidence, there's no need to hang on to it, so. Is there a motion to have Naomi pursue getting permission from the city attorney or the courts to clean that out?
I would, yeah, how much motion it is?
David?
David?
Any?
We'll just give him.
Any, all in favor? Okay, so do we have a, which bid do you wanna go with?
The one that's itemized out?
Who put in bids?
Um, Humeault Electric and Za Ringer Electric. That's the general consensus of. Who the bid needs, who you need to choose for the bid to go to.
One's like two thousand, one's what, nine fifty?
Yeah.
I go cheap one.
Just that, that was not, it ain't that big, but they didn't.
It ain't a big deal, yeah, it ain't like, they gonna be a little bit pondered up there, I like.
What's the total on that? Um, one was nine hundred and fifty, and one was two thousand fifty-eight.
And we have budgeted five thousand dollars for city hall, and all the city halls, so, those don't go underneath that amount.
Alright, so, somebody make a motion to which one that you wanna go with?
The only thing I was saying is that he itemized everything out that he was gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
And this one here, you know.
We're named real complicated still, I was saying.
Am I done right?
I was gonna say, what, what exactly were we asking for?
Well, Roger was, they would meet with Roger.
The, the light switch is wired direct into the fuse box, so the light switch by the door doesn't work.
And the garage door back there is supposed to be fixed also.
So, I mean, all I can do is present you the bids, it's your guys' choice.
So it wasn't written precisely as
No.
That's just what Roger conveyed to them when they looked at it.
You have my vote.
For which one?
I say John here.
Okay.
Come on, man, how are you gonna move that? Are you gonna vote?
He's got, gotta have point two, okay. Is there a motion to go with the bid of nine hundred and fifty dollars?
All motion out.
All second.
All in favor of the nine hundred and fifty dollar?
Rip, don't go with the low bid, nine fifty.
Okay, no votes. Is there a motion to accept the bid?
So the vote is just to decide, did they vote?
The motion for it, and.
There are three levels, nobody else.
Did anybody vote, all in favor of the nine hundred and fifty dollar vote, votes?
So one, and two.
Two. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bid for two thousand fifty-eight dollars?
Great motion.
David? Is there a second?
I struggle with, I mean, I'm fine with the cheaper one, but if you have to go back and, I don't know.
So Roger, I know he was still here.
I mean, they're wired whole buildings, I like saying something, come on.
They got the same words.
Okay, that's what I wondered, if they both had the same information.
I gave them all three the same packets.
So, I'm confused, who's the two thousand dollar bid and who's the nine hundred dollar bid?
Humeault Electric was nine hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Za Ringer's is two thousand. So. Is there a second to approve the two thousand dollar bid? There is five thousand dollars budgeted for city hall maintenance.
I just don't know, since one doesn't itemize anything, I just don't know if he knows what all he needs to do, I don't know. I do, I'm just kinda like abstaining from voters. So it's gonna be tough. I think, I don't know enough about electrical work.
I don't know, if Roger talked to him and, and he knows exactly what's in it and what's involved, then I'm fine with the, the less expensive one.
Okay, so that one was never seconded, the, the motion.
Right, there was no second, David.
So can we go back to?
David, you made the motion on the second.
Did we go back to the original? Motion and, motion not again?
It's pretty complicated, I switched it.
The original one didn't pass.
I just wish that, and he had itemized more.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know, but I'm with you on it, I.
We'll entertain a new motion to approve the nine hundred and fifty dollar bid.
I'll make that.
I need a second to approve the nine hundred and fifty dollar bid, all in favor of the nine hundred and fifty dollar bid. Alright, yeah. We got that one.
Well, I'm glad it wasn't a twenty thousand or forty thousand dollar deal.
Yeah, yeah, but it's so small.
Thousand dollars, a thousand dollars.
I just didn't want it. I'm not fair to my, the new shop I built, he wired that whole thing. He's got somebody sitting in the office to do that.
Alrighty. Any other comments?
I don't know.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to vote to go into a closed part of the meeting for sort of the six one zero point zero two one subsection three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about employees is discussed or recorded. Is there a motion to fill in for the question?
I make the motion.
I'll bring it in, you got no follow me?
Now you gotta say it.
Roll call.
You gotta say yes or no?
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session.
Perfect.
There, it's got to be a roll call vote, they.